This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and Highland Park Planet on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, two twenty-one South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The fire exits are to the right and left of the council chambers. Officer Soden, can you give us some of those regulations?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the Israel with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilwoman Canova.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hill.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilman Costani.
Here.
Borough Attorney Cho.
Here.
Special Counsel Downey.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hooper.
Here.
This month is Mental Health Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation that I'm going to read. And it says, whereas mental health is an essential part of overall health and wellness need and affects one's physical health, relationship, and the ability to thrive. And whereas activities such as exercise, mindfulness activities, social connections, unplugging from the news and social media, pausing time, spending time in nature, self-care may support mental health. And whereas the instances of which wellness activities are not helpful, it is important to note that professional help may be necessary to stabilize and/or monitor a person's mental health. And whereas one in five United States adults will experience a mental illness and one in five children, either currently or at some point during their life, will have a serious debilitating mental illness, according to the CDC. And whereas the rate of anxiety, depression, and overall mental health conditions has risen since the beginning of COVID- nineteen epidemic, which significantly increased the need for holistic and specific mental health services, according to the National Institute of Mental Health. And whereas a great understanding from engaging science and research on toxic stress and adverse childhood experience has informed an understanding of the worsening mental health and suicide rates of youth affirming that a multifaceted and swift response is needed to address the growing mental health crisis. And whereas becoming because of stigma and misinformation of individuals with mental health issues are often overrepresented in the criminal justice system resides in substandard housing or institutions or underemployment or lack of access to basic needs, experience severe socioeconomic inequities and disadvantages, and our impact of our co-occurring substance abuse and commodity, physical, mental health condition. And whereas New Jersey has successfully built and continued to expand its robust array of effects, response, integrated services, and support for children, youth, and adults, and recognize the need for the opportunity that will allow them to heal from trauma. And whereas Highland Park has established a mental health commission to identify and address mental health challenges in our community. And whereas in two thousand twenty-three, Highland Park Police Department was among the first towns to join the Arrive Together program, which pairs plainclothes officers with mental health experts to certain nine-one-one calls involving people facing mental health crisis. And whereas Highland Park Police Department, under the leadership of Police Chief Abram, has made crisis intervention team training an integral part of all officer training. This effort to train our officers has allowed the Highland Park Police Department to be at the front of changing the way police respond to people with mental health crisis. And whereas New Jersey is committed to providing children and adults with mental health with mental health access to behavioral health systems that offer comprehensive, evidence-based, integrated, coordinated, person-centered treatment services and support that are trauma-responsive, complete competence, and compassionate delivery. And whereas New Jersey has implemented and incorporated nine-eight-eight, and I repeat, nine-eight-eight, the national three-digit dialing code for anyone having thoughts of suicide or experiencing a mental health or substance abuse crisis. And whereas New Jersey is making great strides in reducing discrimination associated with mental health diagnosis by instilling hope and providing access to healthcare through a wide array of community-based and human services, human social services to assist individuals with mental illness to live a dignified life with the support and services they need to thrive. Now therefore, I, LC Foster, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do proclaim May twenty-two thousand twenty-four as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I do want to repeat the number if anyone who's having an episode or is in crisis, they can call nine-eight-eight. And I think this proclamation, this bill is so important for everyone who are highly stressed these days because it's really an epidemic. And I'm going to give this, this was brought to us by our council president Hirsch, so I'm going to give this to you to pass on. Thank you, Council President, for bringing that to our attention. We should say that number over and over again so people can know that there's someone there in their hour of need. Okay, and now I'm going to move on to the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the following minutes as distributed April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting and executive session?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canova.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hill.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilman Costani.
Yes.
Now it's time for council reports. And I'm going to start to my right, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Stephanie Kim Cho Han, and I chair Finance. Just two quick announcements. Last meeting did over the budget presentation and you, this is administrator Hooper, and the whole finance team, all your hard work. Property taxes were due May first. There is a ten-day grace period, just a quick reminder. We do have our drop off box in the front. And the RIT Control Board April meeting has been rescheduled to May twenty-third at five-thirty P.M. here in council chambers. If she is still Zoom as well, please. It will be listed on our Borough website, on the Borough calendar. The details and the links will be there. And lastly is Happy Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Thank you for the role that you play in our community. And that's my report.
Councilman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matt Hill. I chair the Economic Development Committee. I want to begin with a big, big thank you to Main Street Highland Park for the five-kid street fair last weekend. I was not able to attend. I was out of town, and my daughter's college graduation in Army conditioning, which is one of only three reasons that you could ever miss this event because it is that special. So it's a wonderful part of what we do in Highland Park. And I've heard reports that there was a fair bit of rain, but even so, it was a huge success. So I wanted to make sure we give a big thank you. I also just wanted to point out that on the rain, just to let people know that the vast majority of the work that goes into this event is done by volunteer labor and that many of the vendors travel to other street fairs and other events throughout the year. And that means that having a rain day just isn't practical, realistic, or feasible. Rain or shine is always the word of the day for this event. And rain or shine, Rebecca Hirsch and her team at Main Street have always made it happen. So a big, big thank you to them. On our content agenda, we have one item related to the Kushner gift and the library. But I wanted to recognize that we recently lost a man who was instrumental in making the entire Kushner gift to the Borough happen. Judge Barney Hoffman recently passed away, and he's going to be sorely missed. Sure, others may have comments on him, but he was a beloved member of the community, a respected judge, and the owner of a Wicked Sense humor. My father and I knew Barney for decades, and we used to go along with some other longtime friends to watch the Mets or Phillies lose at least once a year. And when he was not able to go, I often got to take his seat. Once one of their longtime friends said to me, "You might know a little bit about baseball, but you're not as funny as Barney. Do you think you might come up with some jokes next time?" And it was just one small example of how very, very few people could keep up with him. Whether it was his humor, his sense of justice, or his willingness to give everyone second chances. Barney was way ahead of everyone, and he will be sorely missed. So I just wanted to recognize that. Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Canova.
Thank you, Mayor. Borough Health wants everybody to know that today is World Asthma Day. Asthma is a chronic lung disease which causes breathing difficulties and affects sufferers in various degrees. Asthma is caused by swelling and inflammation of bronchial tubes, sometimes in reaction to allergies, exercise, stress, changes of temperature, and smoking, including second and third-hand smoke. Community, sorry, Commission for Universal Access wants you to know that it is Tourette's Awareness Month. While the majority of people have heard of Tourette's Syndrome, many do not really understand what it entails, most thinking of it as a rare disease and that shouting out obscenities is a criteria for diagnosis, which is very untrue. It's believed that due to the lack of awareness around the condition, it's still one of the least known neurodiverse conditions. The media often portrays Tourette's Syndrome as a swearing condition, and the true realities of what it's like to live with the condition are rarely shown, leading to isolation for those with the diagnosis. As the mayor has said, the Mental Health Commission wants everyone to know it's National Mental Health Month. Mental Health Month was established in nineteen forty-nine to increase awareness of the importance of mental health and wellness in American lives and to celebrate recovery from mental illness. Mental health is essential for a person's overall health. Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can recover from mental disorders in the full and productive lives. If you need help, please call nine-eight-eight or text HOME, H-O-M-E, to seven-four-one-seven-four-one. The food pantry hours are the second and fourth Thursday from nine-thirty to ten-thirty A.M. and six to seven P.M. And the Saturday following the second and fourth Thursday, from nine-thirty to ten-thirty P.M. Gives a food pantry located at Zone Sixteen Center is Tuesdays and Wednesdays from ten to eleven. They had to increase their days because we have so many residents in need lately. I wish to extend my gratitude to Officer Bibby for his prompt response to a nine-one-one call to my residents concerning a family member experiencing a medical emergency. His compassionate demeanor and adept handling of the situation provided invaluable comfort during the distressing moment. Therefore, mitigating the level of stress involved. And on a much happier note, I want to acknowledge one of our crossing guards, Bill, I believe it's Latos. He's been a guard since September. However, he has recently moved to Fifth and Raritan, and that's where I come across him. He's so friendly. The kids really like him a lot. My son says he's so nice, and you can tell he loves his job. And he is here tonight, and I just want to let you know, even when I'm having a bad day, seeing your happy smile and your enthusiasm really changes my morning. So thank you very much.
We all thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Councilmember George.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Phil George. I am liaison to the Public Safety Committee. As Councilman Hill mentioned, I'd like to give a general memory in order for Judge Barnett Hoffman, who did recently pass away. You were at his funeral service, was many accolades. It just went on and on and on. But personally, I did business professionally with him. But as I say all the time, some of the best advice that we could get is from our volunteers. He was a volunteer and a consultant and a good source of information for things going on in our town. My one questionable moment was always that he actually did business extensively with my father, going back to the seventies when he was a prosecutor. My father was a defense attorney. And Judge Herman and Judge Hoffman and I would often walk up one of the memorial services for the city halls or other events, and Judge Hoffman would spend the afternoon walking and telling jokes and calling me John after my father. And Judge Herman would go, "No, this is Phil. This is Phil." But he will be missed, but not the things that he did here in our town. Also, kudos to Main Street and Matt Hill. It was a wet street fair, but the crowds were pretty thick until it really started to pour around two o'clock. And it didn't seem to deter anybody. The merchants were doing well, at least up until that time. Nobody was folding their tents really till about three, three-thirty. They were sticking it out. With regard to our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, they're having their bike rodeo on Tuesday, May fourteenth. That's a lead from today, at Bartle School in the parking lot from four-thirty to six P.M. It's sponsored by Safe Walking and Cycling of the Highland Park Police Department and Keep Middlesex Moving. There's no registration needed. It's for ages six and above. Bring your bike helmet and bicycle. They'll be fun events and help you learn the rules of the road. They'll also, this year, as we did once at the farmers market, there'll be safety checks for bicycles and equipment this year. With regard to the library, as Councilman Hill mentioned, there's a resolution on the agenda to authorize the library board to enter their own resolution to contract with the lowest bidder for work related to the Kushner grant improvements. That will keep everything on the same synchronized work schedule, along with the roof, the interior. If you saw, stop by at the library booth at the street fair. You saw the photographs of the almost completed interior, so things are moving on. But the usual volume is still up, especially with the online services and the remote sites that they're filling in around town. With regard to the police department, the Highland Park Police Department is participating in Police Week next week. There are a team of five intrepid cyclists from our department who will be taking part in the ride down to D.C. They believe they're leaving from Moorestown to ride with the New Jersey contingent. As we talked about last meeting, the Highland Park Police Department was a partner in the community food distribution program in partnership with the Middlesex Counter Prosecutor's Office, Boya Foods, the Highland Park Food Pantry, and the New Jersey LGBTQ Law Enforcement Liaison for distribution of non-perishables and canned goods. The event was held on April twenty-fifth. I spoke to the chief today. He said between nine A.M. and one P.M., over two tons of non-perishables were distributed and that was supplied as a donation by Boya Foods. At the time, they cleared out at one o'clock, over two hundred full bags ready to go were also left for the food pantry, so it was very much a success. There was also, they brought in help from Woodbridge Police Department to assist. The May pack-a-patrol car event for the Edison Municipal Animal Shelter continues. The police department advised me that it's been very successful so far since starting. The first people are dropping off donations for the animal shelter. And again, on the police Facebook site and on the, I'm sorry, the police department main page on the website is the QR code if you want to go to the Amazon wishlist for items that the Edison Animal Shelter, which assists us, is available. Finally, with regard to the First Aid Squad, they were out at the street fair and was talking with the members about the new ambulance that the Kushner Professor will also be supplying. They're still waiting for it to be delivered, but we spent a little time discussing future plans for some of the older machinery and whether it can be repurposed to use here in California for fire assistance purposes. And that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Stellmac. I chair the Recreation and Arts Committee. Included within that work is the wonderful programming and services of our Department of Community Services. I'd like to give a quick shout-out to them, as well as the Arts Commission and the Cultural Commission for sticking it out at the street fair on Sunday, despite the uncooperative weather. But it was a really good time. I was there for a couple of hours, and there was good turnout. And it was really nice to see all of them out in the back there. So just real quick, just want to start with a quick reminder that the grocery store transportation is still available through the community center if anyone leaves it. Coming up soon, this week actually, the Highland Park Youth Theater Company will be performing Seussville Junior. Performances will be held on Thursday, May ninth, at six-thirty, and Sunday, May twelfth, at three P.M. And it will be held at the Highland Park High School Auditorium. Next week, we'll have the May Luncheon at the community center. It'll be Monday, May thirteenth, at noon. Entertainment provided by Lori Goldman. The week after that, at the community center, we'll have the annual health fair, which will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-first, from eleven A.M. to two P.M. Again, at the community center, at the health fair, there will be free screenings, including those for blood pressure, pulse, EMI, cholesterol, glucose, stroke risk assessment, bone density, and skin cancer. Please note that fasting is not required for the testing. Then a little later down the month, we'll be home deliverer annual World Days Parade, which will be on Monday, May twenty-seventh, starting at eleven A.M. in New Brunswick, crossing the bridge around eleven-thirty A.M. and proceeding up to the Delway Monument in Highland Park, where a ceremony will be taking place at the conclusion of parade. And then we have to have a couple of fun musical events that are going to be taking place in the coming weeks. First, on Friday, May seventeenth, and Saturday, May eighteenth, at eight P.M., the Highland Park Community Chorus will be putting on their Spring Two Thousand Twenty-four concert at the Reformed Church of Highland Park. Tickets are twenty dollars for adults and twenty dollars for seniors and students. It can be purchased online at their website, hpcourse.org or at the door. Again, that's Friday, May seventeenth, and Saturday, May eighteenth, at eight P.M. And lastly, my report, very pleased to announce the porch fest, which will be held on Sunday, May nineteenth, from twelve to six P.M. There will be performances at porches all throughout town, and you can find a link to the schedule on the Borough's website. And bear with that, that is my report for tonight.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Including my porch. Probably a full complement of man's, too. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works Committee. And just a couple of announcements. Bulk pickup is happening now and by appointment only. This is the Borough runs a bulk pickup appointment program, and bulk waste collection can be picked up again by appointment. And pickups are scheduled on Wednesdays during the months of May now, June, September, and October. To make an appointment, please call Public Works at seven-three-two-two-four-seven-nine-three-seven-nine. Each household may request up to two collections per year. And please remember that after the townwide garage sale, there is a townwide bulk collection where you do not have appointments. But stay tuned for those days as we get closer to the fall. Pod holes and crosswalk striping are underway. You may have seen those pod marks from the long winter. Michael Zorga went and D W R are hard at work to make sure that those pod holes are filled. But if you see a pod hole that's not being addressed, please report it at www.hpborough.com, and there's a button that says "Report it." You can also call, you can also call the Department of Public Works, Again, Wednesdays are typically the day when pod holes are filled, weather depending. But please keep us posted because we will put it on the list and get those filled ASAP. A couple of larger road projects this week, weather permitting, will have several roadway milling project getting underway. They include Exeter Street from Harbor Road to Cherry Street, Washington Avenue from Raritan Avenue near the Edison-Tentress border, Riverview Avenue from near the guide rail to the dead end. So if you have to be familiar with those streets, you know what that means. Wayne Street, just a small section on Wayne Street in front of a residence there. South Third Avenue from Valentine to Donaldson, and South Eleventh Avenue from Bridge Avenue to approximately it block. Parking signs will be posted before the milling begins. And please note that garbage and recycling pickup schedule will not be affected. If, for whatever reason, you do miss a pickup, again, please call Public Works at seven-three-two-two-four-seven-nine-three-seven-nine. And they are very good at coming back and collecting whatever was missed. Pardon me, just one more note about road paving. Please note that in order to facilitate the work, we respectfully request that, when possible, no cars be parked on the street in areas where work is being performed. And the contractors do anticipate keeping at least one lane of traffic open during construction. However, there are certain times, of course, when the entire road may need to be closed, so please plan accordingly. More two thousand twenty-four projects in the works to keep a lookout for. North Fourth Avenue from Edison to Raritan, Edison from North Second to North Third, Harbor from South First to South Fourth, Harbor Street, not Harbor Place, and Woodbridge Avenue, Volker Street to Fox Road. And that's a partnership with Middlesex County, and we'll have more information on this. This past Saturday, at the Trenton State Museum, Mayor and I were thrilled to be invited to see Raisus Cultural Center, Highland Park-based, honored at a recognition ceremony by the New Jersey Puerto Rican, Puerto Rico Commission. In two thousand twenty-three, the Borough created a partnership with Raisus Cultural Center to provide programmatic space at the Environmental Educational Center on River River, where they are able to continue to grow and impact the community on a larger scale. At the environmental center, we're thrilled to have Raisus as the eyes and ears of the building as we conduct regular maintenance in partnership with the Department of Public Works. Of course, this will continue to be a completely public space available to the community, the Environmental Commission, Sustainable Highland Park, and the Highland Park Native Planet Sanctuary. And we anticipate having a report in just a couple of weeks on the volume of improvements that have been made at the Environmental Educational Center. You know, it sat empty for several years, particularly during the pandemic. During that time, there was considerable maintenance needed to the roof, to the grounds in general, lighting. And so it's really great to have a steward of that building to make sure that it lives up to its full potential. I just wanted to echo about the street fair and five K. Thank you to Main Street Highland Park, Councilman Hale, the Highland Park Police Department, First Aid Rescue Squad, the Fire Department, and the Recreation Department. So many moving parts coming together to what I saw as an observer, a really seamless and wonderful event. We did have some earth and weather, but it is Earth Day, so without rain, you can't have anything, so we may do. And just on Earth, because we celebrate Earth Day in Highland Park on May fifth, and we're every day, I did want to give a special shout-out because I'm the liaison to Sustainable Highland Park. We're really doing a tremendous job organizing music. Anthony Walker, Amandala, Magnolia Street Stream Band, Vegan vegan food from Chef Merritt, and twenty booths of environmental education and interactive exhibits and free native plants. I hope you got your free native plant. You planted those today. And so we're excited to watch that grow. Tina Wise House and the team at Sustainable Highland Park, I just wanted to give a special thanks to all the hard work that they did. And there is a shade tree advisory committee meeting, a regular meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, May eighth on Zoom at seven thirty. Please come, and you can find the link in the calendar section at www.hbvo.com. And you might be able to hear a little bit about the seventy two new trees that have recently been planted that you may have seen in town. And I did just wanted to mention very quickly related to the schools, the Highland Park Educational Foundation. I served on their board for about eight years. They, they provide really important seed money to, to conduct teacher led programs and initiatives. They're looking for new, new trustees. If you, to get information and for them to contact, just go to www.hbfnj.com. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Our administrative report?
I don't know what to say, Mayor.
Okay, our attorney's report for Attorney Shaw.
Oh, Mayor.
Attorney Bennett.
Nothing to report.
Okay. And now it's me, but before I go into anything, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of Judge Hoffman. I too have a Judge Hoffman story, and he made everyone feel special. And I think everyone that interacted away from his jokes and his sense of humor and his gift of giving back and thinking outside the box, especially with the Rad Program, the prisoner recovery program that he started here in Middlesex County, where he would go to. I heard such stories that he would go to the jails and, you know, when the prisoners saw him, they respected him, although he may have sent them to jail, but they respected him and they respected the programs that he put in place for them to come out and to thrive and have good lives and have lead good lives. I was particularly touched and honored a week before Judge Hoffman passed. I've, I've been working with him with a Krishna grant for over a year. And we, we happened to get everything together and we could see the fruits of, of his labor with issuing of the grants and making everything happen. But a few days before he passed, I got a phone call that he wanted was to see me. And I stopped by the house and I held his hand and I read the Bible. I said the Lord's Prayer, because that's what I know how to do. And I think we shared a special moment, and I will be, I think one of the greatest honors is that before someone passes on that they request to see you, that's, that speaks volumes. And I think that the relationship that we had was great and one that we both respect each other. And he will forever be missed. We will be doing a proclamation for Judge Hoffman in the next few weeks. Stay tuned and we'll ask his family to come out and we'll do the presentation at that time. But I want to say to Judge Hoffman, thank you for all you've done for humanity. Thank you for all you've done for Middlesex County, and thank you for all you've done for Highland Park. On that note, I want to go to a little bit of celebration. And this month, we're celebrating Asian Pacific Islander Month, and I want to reach out and say thank you for all the services that you have done for making our home, the United States, a much better place with, from inventions to laws, the policies, and all the contributions that you have made. We all benefit from it and we all celebrate with you. I also want to say thank you to Main Street Highland Park, to Sustainable Highland Park, to the vendors that came out, the five K race, D P W, Public Safety, Fire, Police, First Aid O E M, all the vendors, Sustainable Highland Park. Thank you all for making Highland Park a special place on, when we have our five K race and when we have our day of celebration. It doesn't matter if it's raining, Highland Park always show up. And the vendors always show up and they always have a good time. So thank you for all who came out, participated, and made that day special. And I have a exciting, I have been working with the school board, members of the, some members of the school board for some time now. I would say a couple of months, and I think that we are in a healthy spot as we move along. And this, this coming Thursday, we have a school site visit to perform with Assemblyman Stanley Karavanchak and Senator Dagman, John Cowell from Middlesex County, for them to come and get a tour of Bardo School. So I'm excited about that. I'm, I'm excited that I was the one who helped to get the superintendents of Middlesex County Schools to go over and take a look at Bardo and to see if they can address some of the issues. And to follow, this week, the follow up continues where we will be visiting the school and taking a tour. I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the collaborative work that we'll be doing together. Another thing that's coming up. Traveling Veterans Memorial War will be in East Brunswick as we're looking to celebrate Memorial Day. The B F W Post one thirty three and the township of East Brunswick will be hosting a traveling Vietnam Memorial War. And it will be, if anyone who's interested in seeing this, it will be at the East Brunswick Community Arts Center at seven twenty one Cranberry Road. And that's from the twenty third to the twenty seventh. The traveling Vietnam Memorial War is eighty percent, is eighty percent red color of the Veterans Memorial War in D C. So if you want to say a special thank you for those who have given so much. They've given their life, their limb, and so much more to, for us, for what we call freedom today. Take a moment, go out and honor those great people that give us the liberty for us all to be sitting here and for us to be free. And another project that has been long, long, long awaited, and I have to save the date. And I'm really excited about this because this is the, it's going to be a celebration dinner at the school on Cleveland Avenue. And that celebration dinner will be from June seventeenth to the June seventeenth. And it's four twenty five Cleveland Avenue, and the Shiva is finally going to be opened. It's a beautiful one. I will keep you all posted as we move forward. So we're hoping that we may be able to do some visits, especially for people who live in that neighborhood. And we'll schedule that, and so you all can see what this girl campus, the state of the art girl campus Shiva will look like. So stay tuned. It looks beautiful, and I can't wait to go and see it. And that's my report. Now it's time for public participation. Twenty one minutes total, three minutes per speaker. Items is on, it's listed, on items listed on this agenda. Comments from members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attending via Zoom. Any comments from members attending in public? Please approach the microphone and your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mr. Kalen Kuma Gomber, and I own a business in Highland Park. This is called Highland Park, one and because at ninety seven Woodbury Avenue. I'm having one issue. It is affecting my business a lot. Like you see the corner of Woodbury Avenue and South Ten, one, thirty. And people are leaving their car parked for like five, seven, eight, ten hours a day. And right in front of my door. So I do have a parking lot in the back. It's just like all cars can fit over there. But because of my business, I have like every day, big trucks are coming in to deliver stuff at, at the store. And because of all those cars are parked, sometimes they don't even leave on time. And I'm losing business because I don't have stock to sell. And same thing, the customers also, they, they just, they see a lot of cars are parked and they don't stop. They will come to the store and they go to the Edison store. Next day they come and tell me that, hey, because of a lot of cars there, I don't even bother to come inside. I just went out. So basically, I'm losing my business. I need some kind of help. If we can put a sign like fifteen minutes parking or something like that, that will really help me for the business.
Quick question. Are you talking about on the South Ninth Avenue?
On the South Ten, South Ten portion, yes.
So you're not speaking of Woodbridge Avenue, South Ten, because?
Yeah, there's a two road, but I'm talking about the street, South Ten, the one street.
Well, I'm gonna have a council member, George, look into this. This is council, Council of a Judge oversees the Public Safety Committee. And I think this is something that he can look into and get back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Already made a note to bring it up at Public Safety, so that we can do a traffic check on location.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I respond as well? I just wanted to make sure that you knew about the Neighborhood Preservation Program, which is in the district where your shop is. It's a, it's a grant that we receive that, that provides business help and business assistance. So we have grants to help with business with auditing. I think that, that the parking issue is certainly something in, in that Councilman George can address. But I'd like you to, we can talk afterwards about the Neighborhood Preservation Program, because it, it does have some assistance money that might be available or, or to help in some other ways.
Any other public comment? Anyone attending twice?
There is someone on the Zoom.
Okay.
Looks like Carl Prey. Could you please just state your name and address?
Oops. It's Mary Flusberg, Dennison Street. I have, I have, I have concerns about the assignment and assumption agreement with the Track A developer, H P Raritan Development LLC. I don't understand it. This is a real estate transaction between Ubrees. I read, I read through all of that paperwork. It's a real estate transaction between Ubrees, which is located in Trap A, Track A, at one fifteen Raritan Avenue, and P and K Auto Clinic at seventy Woodbridge Avenue. Ubrees is assessed at four hundred and eighty thousand. P and K Auto Clinic is one point one million dollars.
Dollars.
Anyway, because Ubrees Auto Repair Business is in the center of the redevelopment proposed for Track A. The developer of Track A wants appropriately to help Ubrees Auto Repair Business to relocate. I think that's appropriate for, for the developer to do. What I think is not appropriate is for the borough to act as a go between using taxpayer money to facilitate this private real estate, what should be a private real estate transaction. Taxpayer money question is one point five million dollars in bonds that were authorized some years ago during Mayor Mittler's time in office. During Mayor Mittler's time in office, there's a bonds were authorized in the amount of something between six and seven million dollars, as I recall. The first bond, which I think is the one that is being used here of one point five million, was authorized for the borough to buy Buck Woods, which clearly never happened. I have a problem with the borough using taxpayer funds to facilitate what should be a private transaction between the developer Ubrees and P and K Auto. It continues what I believe is a bad precedent, set by the borough of speculating on property for the benefit of a specific developer. The questions I have is, what is the, what's the ultimate outcome of this assignment and assumption agreement? You have Ubrees at four hundred and eighty thousand. You have the, the P and K Auto at one point two million or one point one million, and the borough authorized one point five million in.
Thirty seconds.
This, this ordinance says that the borough will own both properties, quote, pending the acquisition of the balance of the properties within Track A. From what I understand, there are at least three properties still not owned by either the borough or the developer. So who's going to buy the remaining properties in Track A? What's the process between Ubrees and P and K Auto? What if it doesn't, what if, if the properties don't get purchased? To finish off the ownership. And who, who will pay this?
Ma'am, ma'am, point of order. Your time is up. Thank you.
You gave, you interrupted me already.
Ma'am, she gave her thirty seconds. Your thirty second is up. She stated your time was up. Thank you.
Not on Zoom layer.
No. Okay. Seeing there's no other further questions, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move.
Second, Roa.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes, my apologies for jumping in. I had a question there. I still didn't any process, so.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Joa.
Yes.
Councilman Castan.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, it's now time for ordinance number, for ordinance requiring second reading. But before we go there, I'm going to ask Attorney Joe Baumann to give us the overview of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as I guess, ask some really good questions. I'm going to try and answer them. And I'm going to start with where we're hoping to end up as opposed to the beginning of the story. It's easier to understand where we intend to find ourselves at the end of the transaction than we can go backwards. The goal is for the borough to own all the property in this track. And with the acquisition of this property, there will be only one left, I believe. That will still be in private hands. Over the course, as this was for the property, let's have over the course of many, many years, the borough has identified this area as an area to acquire the property over time with the goal of aggregating all the parcels and having a developer acquire it back from the borough and then build a, a redeveloped project. And we have actually gone out to the marketplace and have taken proposals that we've traditionally designated a redeveloper, which is the Tantliff Team. That is a developer that's described in these documents. The reason we think it's important for the borough to ultimately own this property is between now and when we sign redevelopment agreement with the Tantliff Team, we do not want to find ourselves in a situation where perhaps the private parties did this transaction, and now she owns the property. I'm going to get it back from her team in the future. And we sort of end up in the same place we are today, which is with a private property, owning the property. The end result will be, we'll sell these properties to the redeveloper. But along the way, we spent so much time and energy acquiring all the other parcels. We felt it was critical for us to also own this parcel until we reached a definitive agreement and sell all of them together to our designated developer. A lot of things can happen between now and then. We fully expect to do that transaction with the Tantliff Team. But we want to be extra cautious, because again, we don't want to have all the parcels of not own this one piece because a private transaction occurred where we could have acquired it from the property. So the end result is to own the Ubrees property in the borough, consolidate all the parcels, and then sell to redeveloper, hence the taxpayers, I mean, they would get their money back. But more importantly than that, a development project occurs. That is a yearly reason to make it. Why is the transaction somewhat convoluted? The goal here has been to relocate the Ubrees dealership, repair shops from one location to the other. It was an opportunity that was spotted by the borough administrator and the team that identified the P and K location. It was for sale. So our developer, with keeping us in the loop every step of the way, negotiated transactions that would allow for her and their team to acquire the P and K property, put it in, fix it up, and then allow Ubrees to transfer their, own to there, and then swap properties. But we had to do it in order, so that if first have like a quarter of the property that Ubrees will go to, you have to fix that property up, and then you have to allow the Ubrees team to move to the new location in order to sort of seamlessly, unimpacted, non-impacted business. So this was a, a complex transaction, the goal being to have us ultimately own the property, but at the same time to allow this business to continue to operate throughout the entire process. So we entered into and signed against Judge. So we entered into an assignment that just allows us to step into the shoes of the TANLIF team, both for the purposes of owning the P and K property and then completing the swap of the Ubrees property at the end. That transaction should occur pretty quickly. There's not a lot of work to be done with the P and K property. It's a, it's a really nice location, so we're really thrilled with that piece of property. And when we put it back into the market, and at the same time, we will, so we, at the end, we're done, we'll take in a viable business, put it in a location that has been closed and abandoned, so making that location a viable market participant. Now we will acquire yet another piece of our parcel to complete our redevelopment project. And then we will negotiate, continue our negotiations with our designated developer, sell those properties to that redeveloped, and ultimately get our funds back. And that negotiation that occurs, that's, that's where we wanna get to. And that's why we have this assignment, where we step into the shoes of the TANLIF team for purposes of all of these dreams. So these people, people could disagree about whether we should leave the private parties to their own transaction as a, as a policy matter, and certainly my advice to the borough was not to let that happen. My advice was to have the property come to us, so that we can control our own destiny need, which, because we don't control our destiny, it's taking as long as it's been taken. We've been, we've been trying to carefully work through. We acquired two parcels that were for sale. We had actually acquired two vacant parcels from combination. They're abandoned. There was the last one, so we've slowly been acquiring these parcels again to the hardware for putting them all into a developed portion of a, a project that we can really be proud of. So that, that's sort of just the transactions where we ended up, and that's where we are today. And the price is about one million five hundred thousand dollars, so all those steps out of the, out of the bond. But again, our hope is that when we're all said and done, we sell the property and invest all that money in stack.
Clear. Please report an ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero eight four.
Ordinance authorizing the execution on an assignment and assumption agreement for redevelopment. LLC pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight hundred twelve A, S one X five related to redevelopment of Track A has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final rating by title and affidavit of publication on file.
Okay. Now it's time for public comment on this ordinance. If you wish to speak on this ordinance, please come up to the microphone or put your hand up on the Zoom button, raise your hand button, Zoom. And please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor. Kieran Crowley, two eighteen Harrison Avenue. Um, if I could deviate for ten seconds, thank you for acknowledging mental health awareness, and also I thought the tribute to Judge Hoffman was fantastic. I barely knew him, but to hear people talk about your achievements and also your, your humor, you know, how better to be remembered, so, thank you. Um, so on the HB Raritan, Raritan Agreement, thanks for that explanation. I've got some questions sort of around the edges of, I guess, this, this one agreement. So have HB Raritan received any commitments from the borough outside of just this one agreement? So for example, any verbal agreements, any letters of intent or memorandums of understanding? I don't know what would become public or not, but I'd just like to ask that question. Is this agreement linked to any other moving parts in this, in this redevelopment? Um, what I'd be particularly interested in, are there any changes ongoing or being discussed around the current redevelopment master plan for Track A? So are the wheels in motion? Maybe are some ideas out there, maybe even verbally agreed to? I'd like a response. And lastly, on that question, are there any other financial incentives that have been thrown out? Or, you know, thrown out for discussion or maybe given verbal agreement, such as relating to property taxes, pilots, things that we've seen on other, and other deals? And then just one more question. So you explained the kind of complicated sequence of the property on Woodbridge is bought. The business moves, then we have an open property on Raritan. What happens to the property tax bills and what needs to be paid for both of those properties once this agreement is executed? There's obviously a period where there's renovation, there's remediation of environmental issues. That sounds like two years of work to me. Do we, does the borough still get the same property and land taxes for both properties during this kind of transition phase? Thank you.
Jeremy, you want to? You wanna?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have our attorney answer your question, change up the format just a little bit, because normally we get all the questions in and then we do a, a quick answer. But because of the intricacy of this particular one, could you, uh, borough?
Yeah, so there's one other agreement, it's called, the TANLIF team that's conditionally designated as the redeveloped of the entire, entire area. And so what the conditional designation does is, it does two things. One, we exclusively negotiate with them, so they have an exclusive negotiation period, and they simultaneously fund the costs to the borough, the goal is probably. So for example, the negotiation of this, these agreements come out of the RESCO and so-called the legal, financial planning, which is typically a transaction where the developer, in exchange for the right for exclusive negotiations, they fund the RESCO accounts, and then what happens in the blank word. I should also tell you that their proposal was one of many. We went out, through a competitive process, received several proposals. Those have not been yet revealed to the public, but those proposals will at the appropriate time. The balance we've had here is, we, we haven't gotten too far into the negotiation, other than I know what their proposal is, we know what we have in mind, we know what incentives they're asking for. We haven't really delved into the negotiations of that just yet because of the uncertainty of the property. So they've been sort of cautious and limited in how much money they wanna spend on all this, the weed, sort of cautious as well to try and secure the land. So those negotiations, I would say to say that they made a, they may have put in a proposal with everybody else and made an ask. And we haven't materially responded to that ask at this point in time, which is where it is at the moment. I can't recall whether their ask includes changes to the redevelopment plan. There may or may not be. Not materially, for sure. But they may, and again, all this would be revealed in the same way that we're gonna be soon doing what's happening on Track C, but back with a community meeting, we'll describe it through. To your question about incentives, I explained that. I think they certainly made some asks. Because their proposal is also about how much money they can pay for our land. Let incentives they want. So it's a financial proposal, a development proposal, including who they are and what they've done. So it was a pretty robust proposal, and all that will be revealed at the appropriate time, taxes. So for the, for the time being, as long as Ubrees continues to own their property, they, their taxes, just like always. PK, that private property, will continue to pay their taxes for the period of time when the, when the property is within our, when we own it. There would be no taxes paid. We, we really do expect, you described it a long time, we, our window, expectations that, that renovation will take, will be done by the fall. So we fully expect, you know, four, four months or so, our developer expects it'll be finished and then the transition. There is, we are working around your busy time too, so that's, that comes into play. So there are times, I have to go to the hour, but we're trying to be at least disruptive to Ubrees. Closing may, may be implicated by, when is it gonna have the least disruption on their business? There's periods of time in the year we're trying to work through. So we're trying to be a good, you know, a good partner in the process. So what we do expect to happen is for sure, but we are at a time with when the work's done and when it's least disruptive to Ubrees business.
Okay, thank you. Debbie, anyone?
Yes, I see Carl Prey, probably Mary Forrester, as a manual. Okay, please just state your name and address to confirm it to you.
Mary Forrester, Denison Street. Um, I have a couple of questions in response to what Mr. Baumann had to say. He's talking about swapping properties. So does that mean that Ubrees will swap a property worth five hundred thousand for one worth one point one million dollars? Or, and he will take on another five hundred thousand dollars in debt to do that? Or is the borough gonna pay for that? Or is the developer gonna pay for that? I don't understand exactly how one swaps properties that are so unequal in value. And my other question is, I mean, I find it interesting that in Track A, the borough wants to buy all of the property. Yet in Track C, the developer of Track C, the farmer's market, that developer is basically buying property, some of it for well above its assessed value. The dentist's office was assessed for eight hundred thousand, and he bought it for one point two million dollars. And I know there's other property in that area that has, that you have expanded. And some of those people probably don't wanna sell their property. So does that mean that the borough is gonna get into that, that real estate market too? I, I, I don't think that the borough should be buying property like this, and I.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't see any other hands up here.
I'm gonna move to close this section of public comments. Second, holding favor. Attorney Baumann, would you care to address what Ms. Forrester's question was?
Yeah, I, I think we'll just have to agree to disagree on whether or not the boroughs buy property. That's a, a policy decision we've made a long time ago, and I totally endorse it. These projects wouldn't happen unless, we currently have no intention of buying properties, nor do we have to. On the Track C, as described, the property owners bought a bunch of them. We have our own to sell. That negotiation is much further along and will be revealed soon hopefully. But the, the, the fact is, when you're trying to do redevelopment, you want to acquire, acquire the property, you often end up paying a little more than market, which is the way, that's just the way it is in order to entice the property owners, who are not necessarily interested in some, so Mr. Ubrees has a very viable business. I think he likes his location, so if we're gonna incentivize him to buy, we have to pay him more than market, which is how it works, otherwise he would just say. So that's really a place of admission to the process. Again, our, our expectations that we'll get that money back through our land sale to the developer. But, but again, the, the plan is not just to get our land, the price of our land back. It's bigger than that. We're trying to jumpstart this section of the borough that's clearly underdeveloped and in need of serious redevelopment. So we have a much bigger plan here to, that we're trying to achieve. And overpaying for land, you know, is sometimes part of that, part of the price of achieving that, and trying to particularly work with the property owner and having that his business continue to be viable, who was probably more than happy to stay where he is. So it's just, if you wanna do these things and you wanna make this difference, which we're going to do, absolutely. These are, these are the hard decisions that can be every step of the way. But we've done it every step of the way, thoughtfully, carefully. We acquired the land. We expect that we'll be able to sell it back. And, and it's also true, because the land, each individual property, as you might guess, is much more valuable when it's part of a bigger assemblage, right? So an individual lot might be worth X, but when you put it into a larger assemblage, where you can do much more with the property, it becomes more valuable. So I also believe that the value to that property today, on its own, is not the same as it will be as part of a much bigger assemblage, which is what we're trying to prove. So we're creating value by acquiring and assembling it, which, you know, allows us to also pay more than the, sort of the assessed value on the property.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number twenty-four dash two zero eight four?
Motion to adopt, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Resolution requiring a separate reading. May I have a motion to adopt or reject Resolution five dash twenty-four dash one three seven, Resolution to amend the two thousand twenty-four municipal temporary budget?
So, second. Roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Consent agenda, resolution. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, thirteen A through thirteen K?
Motion to adopt.
Second. Roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
Appointments at this time, and now it's time for a second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to conclude at nine P M. Comments from the members of public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those attended via Zoom. If you come up, please speak into the microphone. Do we have no one in the ordinance, Mayor?
And I don't see anybody online. Excuse me, Mayor, I meant to mention we have five attendees on Zoom right now. And there's no one. Oh, I, I see a hand up. Uh, Mary Forrester?
Mary? Again, um, Mr. Baumann didn't answer my question about what Ubrees cost of taking over P and K auto repair. I, 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 I'm not sure that I think it's an appropriate thing for taxpayers in Highland Park to, to fund five hundred, an extra five hundred dollars. I think it's appropriate for Ubrees to get this property. But I also think that this is absolutely a cost to the, to the developer, not a cost to taxpayers in Highland Park. And, and Mr. Baumann did not respond to that in terms of what Mr. Ubrees is going to actually have to pay.
Attorney Baumann?
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. The, Mr. Ubrees is gonna get literally swapped, his, his building for the new building with no money out of his pocket. The borough is gonna fund the costs, and then the, all, and all the properties put together, we're gonna sell it to the redeveloped, which is why the taxpayers will get their money back.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing there's no fur, there's no one further to, seeing no further, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Choan?
Yes.
Councilman Piston?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor? Our next meeting is scheduled for May twenty-first at seven P M. Thank you all for being here.